All right, I'll call this meeting to order, the planning commission for August eighth. Um, and let's do roll call. I'm with Scott.
Scott Brown.
Elizabeth Shen.
Jackie Edmondson.
Deb Cameron.
And seeing as our chairman and vice chairman are missing, uh, they are accounted for. Um, we'll take nominations for someone to lead at the, the.
I nominate Scott Brown.
I'll second.
You're okay, Scott? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Um, so first order of business, uh, minutes from the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, meeting of the planning commission. Uh, hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review and look over the minutes. Um, any discussion or corrections needed? Sounds like that's no, um.
I move that the minutes be adopted as written and presented.
Second? Sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? All right, uh, that approves the meeting minutes from June thirteenth, so we'll move on to item D. Organizational and procedural, procedural items, and I believe staff has an update on recent zoning cases for us.
Yep, and I'll quickly go through the recent cases, we met here two months ago, and I'll give an update on what happened in between. Then if you all have any questions, let me know, um. Uh, I'll start with the zoning cases first, uh, forty-four seventy Shambly Dunwoody, that's the storage facility. That had a first read at the city council, the city council requested changes in the design, sort of the appearance and the architecture of the building. Additional tree screening, that one's coming back for a second read on Monday. And it looks different, it has changed from a sort of very modern design towards a more traditional look, so check the, the, uh, city council, uh, meeting documents for, for the new look of this, of this facility, uh, eighty-four perimeter center east, which is that fifty-five plus development on Ashford Dunwoodie. That asked to strike that condition about the, the two-year time horizon for them. City council approved this with no changes and no new date, so similar to how you all recommended approval on it. Uh, then the MJCC has passed now too. That's their, uh, updated, the updated master plan for the overall development with the pickleball courts. The, um, the city council approved this with a more robust noise mitigation plan that has sort of specific metrics that's, um, you know, just more specific than, than it was when it got there. Uh, specifics on how to measure and where to measure and, um, and at what times. Then text amendments, uh, medical cannabis text amendment has a second read on Monday also, um. The first read there weren't, uh, particular concerns by the city council. So that may well be, uh, approved as, as you all have seen it on Monday. And then the text amendment for drug treatment facilities, um, that was before y'all, I want to say two months ago, um. That one was tabled by the city council for another half year and the moratorium was extended. What they're asking for is more research on, on the subject matter. And that'll be coming back, uh, early next year. Any questions? Right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Richard has. Okay, yep, then.
That's all, yeah, all right. Okay, uh, we'll move on to item E, unfinished business, any unfinished business from staff? No, okay. All right, uh, that brings us to item F, new business. Um, I will turn it back over to Madeline to talk about, uh, items three and four.
Good evening, so the first item, uh, under consideration this evening is a text amendment for drive-through facilities. Excuse me. So just a little bit of context on our current regulations for drive-throughs. So we have several different types of zoning districts in Dunwoody, we have our non-residential and mixed-use zoning districts. And then we have our perimeter center and Dunwoody Village zoning districts, those are all the different sort of uh, classifications where we have commercial zoning districts, um. The non-residential and mixed-use zoning districts only classify drive-through restaurants specifically. Um, and the drive-through is not regulated as a separate use generally. Um, typically, the drive-throughs associated with the banks and pharmacies are treated as permitted by right wherever those uses are allowed. That's how it's been enacted in the past. Uh, for a little bit of context, most of the commercial properties in the perimeter center are still subject to the non-residential and mixed-use zoning districts, so OI, um, C one, OCR, those types of commercial districts. Uh, and that's because the perimeter center overlay does not affect the underlying allowed uses. And most properties in the perimeter center overlay have not yet been rezoned to one of our new perimeter center districts. And then additionally, the Georgetown area, um, is still subject to, um, the different commercial districts in our non-residential and mixed use. And then same for the shopping center area around the intersection of Mountain Vernon and Jet Ferry Road. And then the Dunwoody Village has the Dunwoody Village classifications. Um, those are all blanket rezoned, and within the Dunwoody Village zoning districts, we do classify and regulate drive-throughs as a separate use, so it's not, um, you know, oh, here's a restaurant with a drive-through and that's allowed. Uh, the drive-through is treated as separate from the underlying use of restaurants, so sort of like an accessory use. And within the Dunwoody Village, we don't permit drive-throughs at all. Um, overall, in our use definitions, we actually don't have a definition for drive-through facilities. Um, but we do have some basic design standards that are in place for drive-throughs, things that specify minimum stacking requirements and setbacks and placement. So those are the current regulations, what we're proposing um, related to drive-throughs, um, I'll get into in another quick minute, but essentially, why are we regulating drive-throughs? Um, so the typical drive-through facility is not conducive to pedestrian-friendly environments. Um, it can lead to a lot of conflicts between pedestrians and cyclists at the points of ingress and egress. Uh, huge stacking lanes can also interrupt traffic flow and infringe on adjacent properties. There's also issues with, uh, environmental impacts from the idling cars, um, the, and the excessive asphalt from car-centric development, and so those are all negative impacts where, um, you know, we saw that we can create some regulations that would help us mitigate those negative impacts, and so that's what led us down the road to considering some additional uh, land use regulations for drive-throughs. And so the way we're proposing to accomplish, um, mitigating negative impacts from drive-throughs is by classifying drive-throughs as a separate zoning category consistently throughout all of our different commercial zoning districts. So it's not affecting the underlying uses of restaurants and banks and pharmacies. That's remaining the same, what's different now is that we're defining drive-throughs as a separate use and then, um, determining whether or not those should be, you know, permitted or allowed, or should they go through a special land use permit process? So essentially, what we've done for the commercial zoning districts is to require a special land use permit within all of the zoning districts, and so anywhere where someone would propose a new zoning district, we are able to look at that specifically, um, and review that through the special land use permit process. And then additionally, we've put in a definition, an actual definition for drive-through facilities, um. So these are the proposed use tables for the different zoning districts, so up here you can see the zoning districts for our non-residential and mixed-use zoning districts, so like I said, OI, OCR, C one, sort of our more common zoning districts than within the Dunwoody Village zoning districts, um. Drive-throughs aren't permitted in any of those districts, that's not changing, that's the same, all we've done is, um, amend the table slightly for clarity, um, by, um, uh, just moving it within the table. And then same for the perimeter center districts, we haven't changed the fact that it requires a special land use permit in PC one, two, and three, we've only changed the order in which it's listed in the table. Um, the major change is to our non-residential and mixed-use zoning districts. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we're requiring a special land use permit for any new or redeveloped drive-through. The special land use permit process is not going to be required of existing drive-throughs, if this uh, amendment were to be approved, they would be considered legal non-conforming. Now, if they were to lose their legal non-conforming status by abandoning that drive-through, if they wanted to reinstate it, they would go through the special land use permit process. Or if somebody wanted to build a brand-new driveway, or excuse me, brand-new drive-through, they would go through the slot process. Um, this process allows us to review these plans in greater detail to determine if the design and traffic, um, and access management is being handled properly for the area and to ensure that we have adequate pedestrian and cyclist accommodations, um, for any new drive-through facility. And again, the purpose of this is to mitigate negative impacts of drive-throughs. So overall, if you guys have any questions about this amendment, um, I'm happy to, uh, answer any of those. And then we should also, um, first hold the, um, public hearings for and against.
Right, so yes, before we get to commissioner questions, uh, does, does not appear that we have anybody here to speak for or against, uh, the proposal, so, um, I'll start down to the furthest left, Commissioner Gordon, any comments or questions?
Uh, it's good, if you could still, um, open the public hearing formally and, and then close the public hearing formally, so we have it on the record.
Okay, all right, uh, so now's the time that we open, uh, public hearing for those that want to speak for or against, uh, the proposal. Uh, seeing as we have nobody here, I will close that and we'll move to commissioner questions and comments.
Um, I have a couple of questions, the, you said that they, drive-throughs are not currently allowed in Dunwoody Village. It, so if there's a drive-through in Dunwoody Village, it's from a prior, before the, um, ordinance was enacted?
Correct, any existing drive-throughs within the Dunwoody Village are considered legal non-conforming.
Okay, and then the second thing, did, did you say if there was a request for a new zoning district or? I just want to make sure that we're not going to have new zoning districts, right?
No, I, I, that might have been a, I might have misspoke earlier, no, i- if somebody's requesting a new drive-through.
Okay.
Um, all of our zoning districts are set for the time being.
That's all I have, thanks.
I have one question for you, just a point of clarification, so when you're talking about the slot process, um, if the building has a drive-through already, and let's say it changes hands, right, so restaurant A to restaurant B, do they have to go through the slot process, then a change of control, or is that grandfathered in?
So the legal non-conforming status, the sort of grandfathered status, the only way they would lose that is if they abandoned the use, so if the drive-through ceased to operate for six months. But if it's just a change of ownership and it's changing quickly and they are not pausing operations for a significant amount of time, they're able to resume it without a special land use permit.
Okay, thank you.
And then just as a reminder, we did hear the non-conforming, this, that was a text amendment, right, earlier this year? And that passed, right?
Yes, we did have a text amendment for non-conforming uses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I, I just have a couple, um, questions, uh, just looking at the, at the definition that's proposed, um, it states a facility at which customer is served while sitting in a vehicle typically associated with drive-through restaurants, banks, and pharmacies. Um, just wanted to get your thoughts on A, should we maybe consider adding dry cleaners to that list, are we intending to also regulate uh, dry, you know, would dry cleaners fall under that as well, their drive-through?
Yeah, so it just lists out what it's typically associated with, it's not exclusive, so I would consider a drive-through for a dry cleaner to fall under the category of, of drive-through and we would treat it as separate.
Okay, a- and I know it's just kind of examples, we're listing examples that are typical of it, would it, do you feel there would be any value to adding uh, dry cleaners there, just so there's no confusion as to whether or not?
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, I, I think that is perfectly acceptable, so if, when you guys make your motion, if that's something somebody wants to add in, just make that part of the motion.
Okay. And then, um, just out of curiosity, you know, the, the wording where it says a facility at which the customer is served while sitting in a vehicle, I just want to make sure that we wouldn't be uh, restricting any, you know, through COVID, all the curbside services have popped up over the last few years, so you know, you go to Target, you go to Kroger and you pull up at special curbside spaces and people come out, I just want to make sure that we don't think that we would be unnecessarily restricting any of those types of uses through this language.
That's not the intent of, of what we're trying to accomplish, um, but it's certainly, I can look into refining our definition to, you know, ensure that we're not infringing on the curbside services.
Okay. All right, um, those were the only two thoughts or comments that I had, so, um, yeah, any.
I have one, one more comment, you said, um, expanding the definition to include dry cleaners. Um, I would suggest that it might be preferable to say typically associated with um, facilities such as, but not limited to, at the end, drive-through restaurants, banks, and pharmacies, just so that well, we included dry cleaners, but we didn't include picking up your clothes that have been altered, so is that excluded, and just do a such as, but not limited to.
All right, any other thoughts or comments before we possibly move towards a motion? All right, uh, anyone want to take a stab at a motion?
I move to approve the staff recommendations for approval with this text amendment with the changes to the text saying typically associated with facilities such as, but not limited to dry cleaners, drive-through restaurants, banks, and pharmacies in all the affected texts.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second, so, uh, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll move on to new business, item number four. Review and consideration of a text amendment to update the list of exempted activities and stream buffers. Altagra?
Yeah, thanks, so all streams in Dunwoody have a twenty-five-foot state buffer and a seventy-five-foot stream buffer associated with them. The twenty-five-foot buffer is regulated by the state of Georgia and fences are exempt from those requirements. The seventy-five-foot stream buffer includes the state twenty-five-foot buffer, so IE, that's part of it, rather than a twenty-five-foot and a seventy-five-foot, the twenty-five-foot is part of it. Um, that buffer is enforced by the city of Dunwoody along all streams in the city, and fences in the seventy-five-foot stream buffer currently need a variance. The city also maintains regulations for floodways and floodplains as established by FEMA, the easiest way to think about this is that floodways are moving water and floodplains are standing water. There's virtually no construction allowed within the floodway and there's only very limited development within the floodplain. Currently, fences are not specifically addressed for floodways and floodplains. Certain activities that have a minimal impact on the stream buffer are exempt from the seventy-five-foot stream buffer. This includes maintenance work and minor land disturbing activities that you can do with hand tools, stuff like that. Since two thousand and twenty, the zoning board of appeals has approved all eight of the variance cases involving fences and stream buffers. They virtually sail through every single time. The variance process adds approximately three months onto the timeline and approximately four hundred and ten dollars. So it slows down applicants significantly, especially given that most fences don't require permits. Most stream buffers are located in backyards. Fences in backyards don't typically require permits. So this leaves to pretty uneven enforcement issues. Additionally, fences are typically installed with hand tools. They mostly have very minimal land disturbance. And so they do generally fall under, in practice, the category of very minor land disturbing activities. There's a need to codify existing policy for floodways and floodplains. Like I mentioned, we don't currently have policy on the books for that. But in practice, what we do is we don't allow fences in the floodway. But we do allow wooden fences in the floodplains. The thought process behind that is that if there were such a large volume of standing water that it were to break through the fence, wooden fences can give way fairly easily if need be. While as, you know, the the velocity of water running through the floodway can be pretty high. And so we just don't want anything in that vicinity. The state of Georgia, the city and the cities of Sandy Springs, Brookhaven, and Peachtree Corners exempt fences from stream buffer regulations. While as Woodstock, Alpharetta, and Roswell do not, just to give you all a sense for what our peer cities are doing. So staff is proposing that we exempt fences from stream buffer regulations, except that fences cannot be in the floodway and only wooden fences are allowed in the flood in the floodplain. So again, to sort of codify our existing position, R E fences in the floodway and the floodplain. We've had our city engineer review these proposed regulations and he's found no negative impacts on water quality and that any land disturbance or soil erosion would be very minor. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will open public hearing for any comments in favor or opposed to this amendment. Seeing as how there's no one here to speak, I will close the public hearing. And now we'll move on to commissioner comments. And I'll start again to the left.
I don't have any questions or comments.
I just have one. Does floodway and floodplain include the entire seventy-five feet of the stream buffer? For example, is is all of the seventy-five-foot stream buffer either categorized as floodway or floodplain?
No, and that's a really great question. So they're separate things. The seventy-five-foot stream buffer is something that the city has sort of regulated and determined. The floodway and the floodplain are determined by FEMA. They overlap in some areas and in some areas, there's just the seventy-five-foot stream buffer.
So is this amendment going to allow fences to be exempt from stream buffer regulations only if they're in a floodplain?
So it will allow the exemption of fences from stream buffer regulations generally. And in addition, fences can't be located in the floodway. So if there's an area where the floodway is over the seventy-five-foot stream buffer, they cannot be in the floodway part. And only wooden fences would be allowed in the floodplain. So you can have, you know, at sort of your baseline, you would have the seventy-five-foot stream buffer. And then in some areas, there's a floodway over that and then a floodplain even sort of larger than that. And so there's three sort of separate boundaries that there can be.
So it could be any kind of fence in the stream buffer?
Yes, as long as it's not in the floodway or floodplain.
Okay. Thanks.
No questions.
I have a question about fence permits. You said normally Dunwoody doesn't require fence permits because they're in people's backyards, like on private property? Or when are fence permits or what's the typical process? I know you talked about variances right now as it relates to this.
Yeah, so fences that are in backyards don't typically require fence permits. But fences in street yards would require fence permits. So if you're putting a fence in your in your side yard on a corner lot or a fence in your front yard, those are the those are the instances in which they require permits. And we don't typically see a lot of stream buffers in those in those areas.
Okay, I just have one question. And really, I'm fine with all that's being proposed. I just noticed that there seems to be a little bit of a difference in wording between the document that's the proposed section sixteen dash seventy-nine and the actual ordinance. So the one that's the proposed section sixteen dash seventy-nine says fences accept that any fence located in the floodway as defined in section sixteen dash three oh one. In the ordinance itself, it just says fences provided they are not in a floodway and that all fences and floodplains are constructed of wood.
Yeah, so the, I think that might have been an older version, the ordinance is the correct one to go by.
The ordinance that does not have the references in it.
Correct.
So we want, what's being proposed as the shorter, more brief version?
Correct, yeah, I think potentially an older version of the section seventeen, so excuse me, sixteen dash seventy-nine was uploaded by mistake.
Okay, so as we're making a motion, we want to probably refer to the version that's in the proposed section sixteen dash seventy-nine.
In the ordinance. Yeah, so it's the one that says fences provided that they are not located in a floodway and that all fences and floodplains are constructed of wood.
Okay, yeah, I had it backwards. All right, thank you.
And that's on packet page one forty-nine of the PDF, is that right? Because it's not redlined and I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, okay, yeah, it should have been redlined, but yes, that's the correct one.
Okay.
Okay, are there any more comments or discussion points? Okay, sounds like no with that. Any motions?
I move that we adopt this text amendment as proposed by staff.
I second.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. With that, do we have any other business?
Yes, I just want to remind you all that on October twenty-third from ten till noon, we are meeting at High Street. It's a hard hat tour. August, I'm sorry, twenty-third. I do need a head count, so if you think you're going to make it, send me an email by the by the twentieth. Or if you're not going to make it, send me an email. Also, I wanted to bring up about our September meeting, which is on the twelfth. City council has asked for a joint meeting. It will be with you all, the city council and the development authority. We will all sit down here and we're working on the agenda. And we'll release it as soon as we have it, so. Yes.
Are we in trouble?
I don't think so.
I think we're all fairly new to the PC. Is that just something that they do periodically?
This is something that the city council asked for at the retreat, so we're following up on it. That's it.
All right, thanks, Richard. Any other business? None? All right, public comment, does not appear we have anybody for public comment. So any commissioner comments this evening? All right, I have none either. So with that, I will motion to adjourn. Thank you all.